These are for discretion items only uh for the council. The um purpose of this is because we have a budget. How many of you have reviewed our budget for this year? Besides city council? Okay, our budget is safe. We have a balanced budget. We have money in the bank, our bills are paid, and we're not going broke. So what we're here to go for is revenues are going down. And we um as a council reviewed this and we know that this is happening. Where do our revenues come from? Who besides former councillor Fran can tell me uh what percentage of our um four thousand do you pay to the city on your property taxes? What percentage?
Oh, Mayor, it's a fair question.
I'm getting point.
Okay, it's 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 ridiculous.
These people don't know why we're here. I do. I saw your agenda. Yeah, okay, I'm aware. Um I'm trying to stress a point. We're here because we have a budget and this council.
What exactly is your budget?
I'm sorry, I'm not gonna take any comments right now.
You're just gonna call your own mouth.
Our budget is a legal document.
Can I have my agenda?
Uh no, I'm a public agenda.
That's hilarious.
Okay, um you pay absolutely zero money in city taxes, zero. Okay, we pay.
Second of all, Mayor, that's not true, okay?
It is true.
Because it's deceptive because we pay bonds, okay, on our on our city taxes. And some people rent their homes, they don't they don't pay taxes directly.
Okay, 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 I'm not gonna discuss it right now. This is a work session.
There's no point. People are here for a reason.
I know that. And it is uh up to the council to review and make considerations for next year's budget. And that's why we asked our city recorder, our city administrator, to put together some talking issues. None of this has gone before any of you because we don't have any information on it at all. It's all talking issues before the council because they are the ones that decide what and how we put into place uh revenues. I'd like a raise of hands tonight of the city council of who is uh welcome to an entertaining public comments tonight. Okay, two, so we do not in um. Thank you. Councilwoman Sogga, did you raise your hand? Okay, so four to.
She has the mouse.
Yeah. So five to two, we do not have to accept council um comments, public comments. What happens is we debate whether something will go forward forward to public reviews, hearings, public hearings. We have no information before us. These are simply talking issues. And so you're welcome to listen. Um we've had, um I had an opportunity to be at the League of Oregon Cities yesterday with Patty Mobillio and the president of the League of Oregon Cities. And they are experiencing budgeting deficits throughout the state. Thirty percent, six percent of these cities, but our city does not have that problem. We do know that our revenue, I'm sorry, we're not taking public comments or questions, I'm reading.
I have a question. Do you not take questions either?
No.
I always understood that you were not. So is this?
I was told the same thing this morning.
So is this your way of stifling free speech while trying to do a time oriented?
It is not, yes, it is.
Trying to eliminate the business people in the town?
Please review ORS one ninety-two six three zero point one. It says that the public is guaranteed the right to um their attendance, to listen, but it does not guarantee the right to speak. That is absolutely something that is up to the council.
You represent us though. You represent us. You don't represent yourselves.
That's fine. We are here to work for you. That's why we call this meeting.
The office works for us.
And if you would prefer, I can absolutely reschedule the meetings when we have information to present and hold a public hearings.
Can we ask your listeners how about that?
So you're in the prime meeting?
This looks bad.
We don't have any information. This is just a discovery of what the council thinks should go forward for information.
I'm married to this whole business thing, but this morning when I picked up my information, she told us there would be a space for questions. She said she told us there would be a space for questions.
No. Yeah, we, that was their determination not to have questions, which they don't have to have.
That that was what I was told, sir, that they weren't going to take comments, but the council would take comments.
It's just the same thing. It's public comments, questions, and my question.
Okay, of course, it's a good idea.
It's we're in the ORS. And we have a meeting before and at the end, reserve some time at the end, so just five, ten minutes that people can ask.
That's up to the council as a whole.
Or we don't interrupt the meeting, but we go forward with meetings, hear everything out, and at the end, answer any questions.
I heard, I'm not, we have no information. This is absolutely a research um of what we have attended by our um city administrators. Each and every single council member has ideas also to present to the council as to maybe possible revenue um uh sources that we can go forward with. So what is the wish with of the council? Do you want to go forward with this and then have comments at the end or what is your wish? Yes, Fran?
So there's a lot of people here, but I think as you say, we don't know which direction we're heading in. So why don't we see how long it takes for the meeting? And if that's the end, we have energy and time, we can, like, we'll get a real time limit of ten minutes and just hear what he's about to say. But I think people have come with preconceptions.
Right.
Because of our last meeting, I heard very much misinformation. And um so let's see where we get to and how long it takes.
Okay. Okay, all right.
And then we have another budget.
Yeah, sure.
Yes.
I'd like to uh affirm on Francis. I think that's a great idea to bring to me as well.
Okay, okay. Okay, um okay, so we've got hundred and eighty-seven pages of documentation of what other cities and I uh organizations have put before us. And so I don't really want to go through each and every one of these. Um if there's one that absolutely stands up as one you want to discuss, let's go through that. And then I would like to hear from each councillor, your ideas of additional revenue uh things that we can explore. All of these um ideas have to be researched, have to be found out if they go before the citizens um for um voting on. And we do public hearings on each and every one before it goes any further. So that's the, that is what happens. Um is is anybody interested in the transportation fee?
I am. Say something before we discuss the.
Yeah.
So maybe, you know, I don't want to try to go to do um do so many things that we're on for, but I just wanna talk about general principles that I've been thinking about, how to frame this. Would you give your views on that?
Sure, sure.
So to me, we have a very small resident population. And we, as we know, some are in all days, that population swells with tourists, which is good for our economy, but it creates problems for our infrastructure needing city services and demand. And so the principle that I was thinking I have to present is that somehow, and right now it all falls on pretty much with few exceptions, on lodging taxes, hopes for people to stay overnight. So that segment of the tourist economy is sort of paying the right back at home city. But the other segment of the tourist population doesn't pay anything. And so instead of raising utility fees on residents or taxes on million, on any other, um any other thing, we need to figure out a way to have it fair, to have it distributed among different sectors, and to have it um not burden um our residents, many of whom are on prefixing, but sorry. So I found a way of trying to spread the burden um from local residents to the tourist population in a way that, you know, they pretty much don't notice. You know, all these small taxes here and there on um like Yahoo or something, it's just people, you know, it makes a very little difference when people come on vacation. So anyway, that's that's the principles that I wanted to kind of train and what I'll be looking at when we do any of the things.
Okay.
So I have a question. So as we go through this, are we going um, how how are we going to do the pages that Kimberly gave us? And her suggestions that we're going to be asking us what we think of that?
I just wanna see if anybody wants to explore a utility service transportation. Each and every one of this, who wants to, and then why? Anybody looking at that one? Okay, let's press it off the list. I'm sure most of you that are here are for the food and beverage tax. Are you guys to explore that? Pardon?
I'd like to explore that.
I've got two.
I'm interested in learning more about it. Yeah.
Just learn more about it?
Yeah, I know we looked into it briefly a few months ago.
I'm absolutely interested in learning more about that.
That's not hard. So I've got four that want to explore that.
No, I I so, Mayor, if I could, I think that everything on this list should be explored. You know, when you when you start looking at um, so wait, we started looking at this back in twenty twenty-one, I think it was, or twenty twenty-two, whenever we sat on the financial advisory committee. And we knew that that was coming up and we were trying to uh decrease our reliance on transit lodging taxes. And so the list was prepared and said, here's how we get all of our money. What are some of the things we can do? And so, you know, we we talked about the utility service fee, for example, there's a there's a number of things that are in that particular topic. You know, things that we probably don't do today, but maybe we should consider doing. Things like sidewalk and uh street improvements and public safety fees. And you know, there there are things you can stick into a utility service fee. There are things you can do to a restaurant fee. There are things you could do to a hardware taxation. So I would I would hate for us to go through this meeting and say, no, no, yes, no, 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 yes, without really having an opportunity to explore um the details of what each one of those things represents. So for example, you look at the utility service fees, streets and infrastructure could be a utility service fee that we could add to a utility bill, and it doesn't have to be a huge amount of money. It could be a small amount of money that is um presented as um, you know, helping to keep curbs and sidewalks and and those types of things, and it's distributed among the residents, it's in the city itself. And so I I would not want to discount it just because it falls under a category that is utility transportation. The same with, you know, food and beverage tax. That, I mean, it it's great, and there's a lot of nuance to it, and a lot of things that we need to discover and understand and and those types of things. So um I think each one of these things, well, I I take that back, there are some of these things that are on here, but I just don't think are a great idea. But um I think a lot of these things have great ideas and there was a ton of information in that packet.
I know.
I mean, I I read the packet from beginning to end, and while I picked and chose chose and highlighted and and those kinds of things, I didn't see anything where it fit together really well. And I think we might need to spend a little more time and kind of break things apart and say, you know what, we need money for X. And maybe that X is uh streets. Okay, so if if X is streets, what kind of things can we do to get money for streets? And the things we might be able to do for streets is a utility fee that would help support streets. Maybe we have um uh some kind of a uh a user fee that we charge that is a gas tax, for example, could be attached specifically for streets. So there, I think there's a, I think that the framework, while nobody likes new taxes and everybody, you know, everybody's not gonna wanna pay. That's, nobody wants to pay extra taxes. But I think everybody here can realize that um extra dollars are being charged for everything that we get today. Food costs are up, uh utility fees are up, uh everything that we use in our business, soap supplies, all of that kind of stuff, it's all increasing in cost. The city increased transit lodging taxes back in twenty twenty-one, I think it was.
Yes.
To twelve percent. Well, there's been how many years of um increases in costs, and the city hasn't had any increase in any of its revenue streams? In fact, tourism this year, according to CBS, is down ten and a half percent. So that means we're taking a ten and a half percent cut out of transit lodging taxes, if if not even more, and we budgeted for that this year. But um you know, if I I think we we need to be forward thinking and not have all of our eggs in this one basket. And so, you know, if we're down ten and a half percent this year, or God forbid another thing like COVID were to hit, and we have no revenue coming in, we need to diversify where our our revenue is coming from. And I I I just would, I would hate for us to discount something as just a line item where there could be components of that that could really come helpful to us.
That's all I know. I agree with Phil. I think that we can prioritize, not possibly, you know, A, B, C, R, and do it.
Good idea.
And work on um one, you know, one at a time, two at a time, something.
One at a time.
Um I um I was thinking about the staff and what they have to do to research this.
I know.
I think priority would be a good initiative.
Okay, and my ultimate, I was just to give you everything I could find that cities are doing. That was it. Um I didn't come myself with any recent seen notions or didn't, it's just that. Just wanted to make sure you got everything.
Well, and there was a ton of great information in there. I mean, I, it it was really good information. Everything in there was
Oh, it was best.
was worth reading, except all the ordinances that everybody adopted. It was like, hey, I don't care, whatever.
Well, it looks like a universal policy. If you're here, I'm not in your state. You know, so that was good to have a cross section of different cities and sizes of cities to look at what they're doing.
Would parking, parking fees be a?
There are some coming on. There are some coming on, I'm sorry for the.
I'm just wondering, like this.
No, we're not taking public comments.
Maybe save it to the other side.
Oh damn, have you considered cutting spending?
Uh please. The council has.
Can we turn the fans on?
Please, please wait till the end when the council has, they would consider hearing a public comment. Rainey, would you please?
Mayor, the, the, you know, I I read that and I actually liked that section on utility fees. Uh what I liked about it, I guess, was that everybody's got skin in the game and something like that. And I think it's real important to do that, that that's all coming ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um the one that I would really like to cross off the whole list to avoid is the payroll income tax.
Absolutely.
That's gotta come off because that's not anything we we can have in. Um and I don't see what charter head tax.
Yeah, that's that's what I'm thinking.
Oh.
We just, are we thinking about?
Right, I don't know. Just to be about. What are your thoughts on the transactional sales tax?
So personally, were you asking just to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so for me, um this transactional sales tax, I think there are three cities in the state of Oregon that do that, three or four. One of them here is on the coast where I think they charge the quote unquote sales tax to everything sold on like, we call it. Um and so I think it should, it should be considered.
Okay, okay.
I I I, again, I'm I'm all for let's come up with the ideas and then figure out what we can and can't do. And I really think, you know, when, once we figure out what those ideas are, we just need to go out and pound the statement and work to try.
Hold up a series.
Absolutely. Figure out where what where there's an appetite and where there is.
Right, exactly.
So, yes, so um again, in my framework of thinking, how did, we could explore all these, but one of the ways to look at it would be who's impacted? You know, um is it residents primarily or tourists primarily? Is it um directed to like, you know, harbor costs never made for themselves? You know, is it directed to the harbor? Is it directed to paying for the water plant that we have to replace or the sewer plant that we have to upgrade? So is it related, you know, it would perhaps um somehow spread the cost. So I see like a a flow chart of some sort, we could type a tax, who's primarily impacted, what rate, how much would it raise, to what purpose? And so, because everything seems good, but some things might be really hard to implement, implement like disposable bag fees, for example, you know, with little gain. So it's like, we have to weigh, how far is it? Will it be worth the revenue that we get? And um somehow help us, that might help us prioritize.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, uh Fran got me thinking about something. I think one thing that's uh absent from our agenda here are ways to that is a theme in the packet uh is to economize uh and to maximize those things that we have now and to uh, you know, uh make our spending more in line with the resources that we have.
I think we do that during the budget process.
One thing that we don't do, though, is look at the revenues that we have, we can like toward enhancing the existing revenues and making it better. I think that would actually be a good line item.
Yeah.
You know, what can we do to, what can we do to, uh what do I want to call it, fine tune existing revenues? And I'm I'm quite familiar with the transit lodging taxes, and I know that, uh you know, there's, when when we were going down the road trying to make sure we were collecting all the tax, you know, that's a that's a huge component of transit lodging tax. Are we getting every dollar that we should be getting?
Yeah, of course.
And if we're, if we're not, what can we do about it?
Yes.
But, you know, we're probably one of the lowest cities, and and here I am, I'm a I'm a transit lodging tax person, I have vacation rentals, and we are in Deep Bay the lowest priced licensing for a vacation rental of anywhere that we have vacation rentals. And so there's an opportunity there for us to take what we currently do and enhance it or optimize it to better uh increase the revenue stream. Now, maybe maybe we change our licensing for vacation rentals and we charge the appropriate fees that are necessary for that. Um and and, you know.
I've already been working on that. That will actually come to you guys uh, I mean, I'll September second, March the second, beginning I have a draft.
Yeah. But we have a lot of fees in the city that we could be doing with it.
Yep.
And so, you know, by resolution, we should be looking at those probably every year for every eighteen months or however often that is to figure out where we're at on those, because some of those fees haven't been raised in in forever.
And we should, I would really like to see us get on a schedule to where we review these fees on an annual basis, which is what a lot of cities do, where they publish a master fee schedule.
When we start that in January, we start that too.
Right, right. So in July, we would have some, a new master fee schedule to play. And when we get our new plan on board, that's one of the tasks I want you to work with, uh AKF planner, is our land use fees are woefully out of date and out of, with the mix of numbers. And that's a big project that we really. Okay, where were we?
Um one and two charter.
Charter, yeah, okay, that's a good question, okay. Um disposable bag fees. Oh, I see. I should put all that back through. I think she asked for sure. Disposable bag fees.
I think there's a very little amount that they have.
Explore fuel tax like Newport.
You know, we don't have any. Newport does, even City doesn't, so um it's it's worth exploring.
Um. Liver tax, how do you enforce the liver tax?
Sessile tax.
Oh. Or um you probably have the LLC help us with that sensation. Oh, the Department of Revenue, I mean, sorry.
Well, it said the companies are required to provide a list of items like toilet paper and things like that.
Right. It would be probably administer very much like we do with the short term rental, you know, through the filling out form and and business license that would be probably.
I think we should get rid of that, because that's another nuisance tax, just the idea of keeping track of all that stuff would be impossible.
I agree on that one.
Which one are we talking about?
Liver tax, yes. Let's get rid of that one.
You know, I think this was originally established because manufacturers have to pay it. It's like a manufacturer that creates something, they have to pay a tax on the product or packaging that they put in it.
And that's what I found wanting to.
And so I I just don't think we have a way to administer that.
Well, and I think that's what we've been discussing with solid waste, that can trigger, that long term can trigger responsibilities. So at the state, you know, they're considering um reference in place to make sure it's the same responsibility.
That would be that cycle modernization.
Yeah.
Mayor, one of the things, if I can say, that really excited me in this presentation, I couldn't tell you the page numbers, my wife knows, that was that it recognized the role that enterprises play in the city. And we are an enterprise city, and it said, go make a profit on the things that you sell, like gasoline. Uh there's been this, I think, it's a, I don't think it's true, there's anything that says, I mean, it's about, you can't make a profit. You have to make a profit in order to build capital reserves.
Right, right, totally, totally true, so. Okay, vacancy tax.
I wasn't sure I answered that. I mean, it it to me, it it sounded like we were charging people if they didn't have somebody in their property, if they were just sitting there.
Yeah, especially California, I was saying, no, this is not what I didn't propose this to say.
No, no, I I get that, I get.
This is what I found in California and I thought, wow, that's weird and intriguing, but I mean, you don't absolutely have to do that.
That's like. That's. That's radical housing policy. Yeah, yeah, I, I just need, I think I just support that.
What about the water craft?
That was another interesting one, you're like, I was like, okay.
Yeah, this I this is, I think, the state level. I think states do that. I don't think we would have the ability to do any kind of exercise.
Okay, let's cross it up.
Because we don't license vehicles.
Well, there was that option too, but I just put that in there because we don't have memberships here. Right. So would you like to say what's left on the list? Yeah, okay, so we've got the utility service transportation fee, the food and beverage, the transactional sales tax, the charter head tax, uh fuel tax, and I think that's it. Which is, which is your priority? The number one that you'd like to have researched? I'm I would say charter head tax. The charter head tax?
Yeah, because I think that could be a really low impact, like you could do a dollar per head and it wouldn't even be noticeable. But with how many uh people go out to Harvard daily, it could really be, it could really happen. And it could, it could help.
Yeah.
And I I I found it interesting in all the packet information that it was, um they tied a lot of it to specific projects. So like you could do a charter tax and have the benefits of that tax go to the harbor, the harbor master, the harbor maintenance, and all of the docks and stuff that need to happen down there, which would then free up the money that the city currently uses for all of that to go to other projects. So it could be a redistribution to. Mayor, I think that uh my memory serves me, Liz Martin put together a letter to the feds for our um selection, not our selection, silver room room. And uh she cited, I believe, a hundred and fifty thousand users at the harbor a year, fifty thousand well watching, a hundred thousand fishing.
Around it, yeah. I remember that also, yeah. Yeah, that would be a good one. That would be, that would be helpful. Um I would really like to see, you know, the utility one as number two. I think that might be something we could really.
I'm not sure about that. No, I um, again, I think we're kind of maxing out some of the local people here. And utility taxes would go to us, would burn local people.
It is a local, yeah.
So I would admit to maybe the food and beverage to capture some of the, or transaction, we don't know really the the difference between most of our transactions, food and beverage, but in any case, um or transactions, then we have fuel, I think that's separate. So I would say some sort of uh food and beverage transaction tax, and then after that, for many of these priorities, we then go to the utility.
Okay.
Well, how about the other parts of that line item? It's not just utility, it's service and transportation fee. What what are those talking about?
You would, if you chose to add some kind of a specialty to the utility bill, which would impact commercial and residential, business is a short term, it would affect everybody, you would decide as the council, where do you want those funds to go? So you might decide that you want him to go to the overlays where he's gonna do, or to fix potholes, or maybe you want him to do, to trim trees or clean out storm drains or anything. You would determine where you think the best use of those funds would be.
But what is the transportation fee aspect of that?
It's the same thing. They just, it's the same thing, they just call it different things. Like for the transportation fee, it would just all go on the streets. Okay. So this, if you choose what you want the money to go to, that's how we go track it and manage it.
But we we would have full authority to write that the way we wanted it, so we could potentially exclude the. the, the one EDU houses from, from those fees if we wanted to, to be able to raise those. I mean, I, I, I just think it's worth exploring.
Mayor, if, if I can just, you know, I'd like to respond to what I heard from Councilor Rick because I, I, I certainly feel for, people and the pressures, especially now with inflation. But we gotta remember that people, as you pointed out, people don't pay taxes in this town to the municipality. So this isn't asking in my mind too much if it would serve the role of the property tax almost.
Yeah.
And I haven't been here long enough to know, but, uh, we don't pay taxes because it was written that way in the original charter.
In our charter. Correct.
Or in the original founding of the city. I don't think it's in the charter, but, um, it's gone to the vote of the people a couple of different times is my understanding and the people have voted it down. Um, but it's not the people of Depot Bay, right? It's, it has to go to the whole district.
Statewide.
So the state has to decide whether Depot Bay could have a property tax or not? Yes.
No, no, yeah, the voters decide.
No, that's true.
The voters decide.
The voters of the state.
No, the city, our voters decide whether or not we increase taxes.
I want it to the entire state.
No, is that we can't establish a property tax, but we would have done it a long time ago. The only way for us constitutionally, under the Oregon constitution, because I think it was when measure five came out, uh, is to have the, we, we ran out of time to change ourselves. And, uh, now we are just like, uh, one of the three cities in the state that don't have property taxes and we can't get them without a, 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 an actual ballot on the statewide ballot. And we've tried that a couple of times. The last time with Alan Brown, a state senator. He got us in and, uh, uh, it went down and I think people just were gun shy around statewide tax issues. So they didn't understand it and it just keeps going down.
I just wonder if it's worth investigating this again to, I mean, it, it just seems to me like, um, being one of three in the entire state that doesn't have enough base property tax is, is just not strange.
Can you guys clarify that please? Because I actually do pay property taxes. Can you just clarify that you're, what you're saying?
There is no property tax under any, on your property that goes to the city of Depot Bay.
But I do pay property taxes.
Do that county. So no more comments.
I, I don't think you can allow this to go to all the last, you know, it's enough of a, okay.
Okay, we're done with the comments.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that maybe it's time to explore it because this is put in place in this perfect seventy. It is a very different worldwide movement, so it would explore it.
Would explore it. Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
And Rick, you said it was measure five? Is that what it was?
Well, I believe it was, uh, uh, yeah, that in the nineties, a tax measure went through to change the Oregon constitution and, uh, established new rules for taxation. I can't give you the details, sorry, I don't remember very well, that's from the voting, right?
Okay.
I think it was already not, how much could you, um, raise on the base kind of the taxes, how much each year? Because it's probably, you know, really, yeah, to look at some value, you can't go over the, it is with measure five.
There, there's more information and I think this is a more complicated issue, but what is, what I'm seeing here is partially correct that we can't, um, we can set something that's called a local option tax, which is just a temporary tax. Um, this is right off the Oregon dot gov website. Um, you can ask voters for a temporary tax and we authority above the permanent rate limitation, which is ours zero. So we can ask for a rate. Um, local option taxes are limited to five years for operations and ten years for capital construction purposes. I did not put that on there, even though I did read about this, uh, as an option.
Would, would, would that be renewable that for five years?
It doesn't say anything about renewable, but that would be a question to ask.
To me, that sounds like a levy.
It is very much like a levy, yes.
And, and actually you could renew it if you wanted, you just have to go back to the voters, so I, I think that's another good way to go.
Yes, you can, if you go back to voters, you can ask for anything, it's just whether the voters will give it to us.
So that would be for the residents of Depot Bay only to vote on?
Yeah.
No, property, a property option.
Don't you have to have an option levy, uh, an option? I mean, what, what, what it is that you're, you're dealing with the money?
Right, that's what this is saying right here. It's limited to five years for operations, so, and then ten years for capital construction. So for example, our water treatment plant, we know we're going to need millions of dollars for that. So you could put in local option tax or may or saying that this one goes for so long to help, to help fund the capital construction of our property.
I think we should add that to our list.
Okay.
If you could sound, absolutely.
So councillors, I, I, um, would like to, if you have any additional ideas to, let's explore those as well.
Well, fuel tax is something.
Yeah, we've got that on here, we have it somewhere, yeah.
Absolutely not.
The oilhead tax, yeah.
Well, the, the idea of, oh, not, that was all.
I'm sorry, councillor.
Hi, I would like to see a parking fee, um, on this list. And then I'd also, I have a question on this, on the food and beverage tax. Is there any way to exclude local people from that?
I'm not sure that you can. I think if you place a tax, you have to actually tax everybody, but if that would be something that the council wants to know, I would.
Yeah, and then, um, on the parking fee, you know, I, I mean, if you look, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars buying property for tourists to park on. I think a parking fee is reasonable.
Okay, it was in the paper, Newport's doing it, I'm sorry, yeah, Newport's doing it. So far, so good.
Seaside hasn't.
It's not so far so good.
It's not.
So the, um, the other thing, um, in my strategy would be how difficult it is to be to, um, spot it on the government. That would be my other criteria, I mean, my depression. Because some things, um, you know, the parking fee, we can enforce it, we don't need to enforce it right now. So we have to, again, doubt, how much is it going to raise and how much is it going to cost to enforce? Because if we don't enforce, then it's not, first of all, we don't have revenue, and second of all, the people who are legitimately paying it versus those who don't, we have to make sure it's a level playing field very well. So that, that would be my other criteria, um, revenue and revenue.
My comment is I'm really doubting that we're charging people to park. I think it's gonna, it excludes some families from coming. I mean, people are going to love it, I, I don't like it.
Mayor, can I ask a question? You shared that part. And I, I, I think sometimes, uh, why are we as a council considering parking so much? Because, um, adding parking to, uh, for the businesses doesn't do anything for the residents of Depot Bay. It's an expense that we shouldn't have to incur. Uh, there are things called, there are ways that a, a business, look at, there's, there, there has to be forty million dollars of taxable property just south of or north of the, of the stoplight in Depot Bay. That could be, under a business improvement district where businesses tax themselves from their own district, they could purchase property and build their own parking shelter downtown. We have a study on that. It's sitting there collecting dust. And, uh, but let's not make this the, this, put this on the backs of the residents of Depot Bay. We need our sidewalks, we need our water mains fixed, we need infrastructure now. Uh, building parking to me is kind of a, of a, you know, it doesn't really improve our lives here.
Councillor Sovereign, are you asking to, um, increase and buy land for parking or just charge the, charge for the parking that we have? The lots, on the, on the lots that we have?
My thought was to charge on the lots that we have already purchased. I like the idea of a business improvement district too, if somebody wants to take that one on.
Well, I'm in favor of, uh, charging for the lots. I just don't know how to do it, uh, but there's a way and it should be a volunteer yield like our harbor is maybe. You know, we have the money and you can take it.
I'll enforce it for commission.
Okay, um, so we've got three, three priorities.
Councillor, are we putting that on the list or just?
We should have it on the list.
I are, are we?
I don't know.
Councillor Sovereign has asked for it, but it's up to the, I just need to know so I know what I'm going to be working on.
I, it's not my prayer. It, it wouldn't be mine either. I think it's something we can explore, but I think we must, it works.
I'm, I'm, I'm working, just want to make sure I know what I'm going to be working on, you know? And I don't think, you know, we can explore all these things, we can get all the details, but then we have to hold public hearings on that. You get public comment on it. So let's, let's priori recite the number one, which would be the charter tax, right? And I'll try and get that through by October. Information on it. Um, I have already, oh, sort have given some information to the harbor commission on it, so. Oh, okay. Usually you want the harbor commission's recommendation on something like that, so we are working through that. Yeah. I don't think I can promise it will be to you by September second, might be coming October. No, yeah. I would say it just depends on when they get a chance to review it. Um, because we're also working on the outfitter guides license, remember, because that has been a concern? Right, yes, yes.
So licensing was one of the things that I had on my list.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're probably not licensing a lot of people that should be licensed. Uh, and I think of all those, those charters that go out and pay the annual fee to, to launch those boats and they're bringing five and six people out and they're taking up all those carton spaces and they're paying one annual fee to launch that boat and they're making a ton of money for everyone of those charters.
And they're using our facilities.
And they're using our facilities.
We had to pay for the garbage to dispose last weekend.
Well, that was a part of this, um, big debt.
Exactly. And the outfitter license.
Mayor?
Debate.
Could I, I'd like to say something about this. I think also the, uh, the council's looking at, at something that's important here and that's, uh, the, the biggest single deficit we have in our budget in terms of revenues and expenses is the, of course, the harbor. But not only in terms of a, of a head tax, but I think that, that one of the suggestions I made here was a study to see how far we need mortgage and other fees in line with other harbors creating a charter license fee, uh, such like you would see in Newport and other cities or other ports or any, any other ordinary user type fees. And, uh, and, and to see how far that would go, I mean, we could run like an Excel spreadsheet on it to plug those fees in along with what Bill was mentioning on this, on the, uh, uh, the six pack, uh, guide licenses, they should be part of that.
Yeah, we've already raised mortgage fees. I don't know if you're talking about mortgage fees, but we've already made, did all the work to study the backwards side. So are we talking about like what you would call instead of a business license would be a charter license? So, which is what I'm looking at as well and that's partly what they're looking at. Um, there's a, there's, just like everything else, there's a few options, you know? Um, you can charge a business license to keep you compliant with the city's code, but then you can also say, well, on top of that, if you're a charter, you need to pay X amount of dollars. You know, so there's, it's not just a one shot free, we have to work out a couple of the items on that, so. But, um, it's going to be hard to do and get any comment from the harbor commission because you know we have several captains on that as well.
Yeah.
So we are working on it, but I, I doubt you can increase mortgage though, right?
Well, and, as long as the mortgage is, is in line with, uh, you know, where the median or, you know, we have, one of the things we have to keep in mind is we have probably the best harbor on the Oregon coast in terms of what it's used for. Uh, everybody else has to drive miles to the fishing grounds. In Depot Bay, you can just go fifteen minutes and, and you're catching, you know, trophy rock fish. Uh, and it's a premium harbor and we kind of have to look at it like that. Um, great facilities, uh, good personnel, everything that, uh, a voter or, uh, uh, would want, uh, for a fisherman or a whale watcher.
Did we change the ordinance that limits our raising of rates fees on that?
I'd see how they could be brought into, uh.
I think we, I think it's still a capital limit at, I want to say five percent. Um, but again, I, we just did a pretty big jump. I was cautious against trying to raise mortgage again.
When you say a good jump, what do you, what do you mean?
Well, we just did, to, to bring it in mind with our, our. Yes, to bring it in mind, and I forget what the percentage was, but it was more than the percentage of any, it was like seven percent. Yeah, and then, and then we allowed the cost of living to increase. Right, that's all right, yeah. So I think we already did that.
Okay, okay, we'll check into that.
So you could see, I'm sorry.
You've suggested more.
Oh, I was going to say just further investigating the guide boats and getting that under
Oh, absolutely.
control might be a lot more revenue than it even requires.
I was surprised when I found out how much they charged for a six pack per person and I'm learning all these harbor charts, it's wonderful. Um, and then what we charge for, uh, to launch from there and how many, uh, to, to the purchases, about them this last weekend?
Over a thousand, we just, oh, we.
And that's all money that we pay for this, so we really need to recoup some of that and that could.
We have to recoup all of it, just in order.
And the smell alone.
Oh.
I, we, this whole South Florida section, I just, I just can't.
It's impossible.
It's just, yeah. Um, one thing I have on my list that I didn't hear and it kind of goes hand in hand with the, the gas tax is, um, back in the Midwest, we had a concept of city stickers.
What?
City stickers and it was basically a way for cities to license the vehicles that are used in that city. And it was specifically for road improvement type of activity. And so you would buy sticker from the city and you would, you put it in your car and that entitled you to, to have, use your car on city streets.
Well, it's not.
This is what it's basically.
It's not me.
It was a, it was a resident fee, yeah. I mean, it was, it was, uh, to do sidewalks and, and, uh, and roads. To overlays and that type of stuff.
I heard that was a, enforcing of that.
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it.
Because it's hard to enforce the state tax on the harbor.
Right. So that was, that was just one of the things that, that kind of went with the, it kind of went with the law or the gas tax. And then, um, the other one that I have on my list that, uh, I didn't hear come up, which I was surprised because councillor Beasley talks about it regularly and that is municipal court and the way to recover, uh, traffic tickets, uh, people who are in violation of city ordinances, um, and all of those kinds of things. I don't know, I don't know what all the logistics of that are. The char, the city's charter allows for us to have a judge and, and all of those things. I believe, and I wasn't around again, but I believe the city, when they established the one percent fee back in twenty seventeen, it sounded to me like everything I read that it was to help fund the creation of that whole mun, uh, whole municipal court congestion, all of that kind of stuff.
I definitely know a square of common state.
Right. So that was just, I had that on my list and then, um, the last thing I had was the bonds. Um, you know, we, we did the, the rate study for the water and sewer, we've increased the rates and, you know, we, a, a good portion of the rates that we're paying for our, um, our water and sewer have a debt service component attached to them that was specifically put in there by SCS to, to cover the interest rates that would be charged on the bonds. And they identified.
Simple and interest, it's principal and interest.
Right. Yeah, they identified that, you know, we're going to need to do something. So, you know, the, I were, I was reading the report just today even and they, they knew that the foundation of the water treatment plant needed to be done. They knew that there were water lines that needed to be done and so, uh, they built into the rate structure the, the bond. And so, I mean, I think we've, we've had conversations as a council about, um, bonds and, and trying to find out where we are and what we can do. And I think we should pursue that as a revenue. I mean, it's, it's a loan source more than it's a revenue source, but it, it would get us the capital that we needed in order to do the work that needed to be done.
Do you remember though, loans have to go before voting the people. So anytime we take home a home and a loan, what do you do with it? Ask it before voting people. The current bond that we have is to pay off the water treatment plant, so work that was done in the past. It's not being banned, meaning that the money that we're moving the bond isn't for the purpose of being banned. Um, it's to pay off a loan, so that they got approved with voters years ago and then they'd be filing this in two thousand twelve or twenty, something like that, so. Yes, council.
Mayor, thank you. Uh, and, uh, on page two of your packet are the suggestions I turned in and one of them is for the municipal court. And, uh, I sent Cam some information and, uh, boiled down, the city of Lincoln City makes about fifty-five percent on its operation of this, uh, municipal court. To be an example, uh, in, uh, in its biggest year, and this, this was the two thousand nine to ten year, they issued a hundred and seventy thousand, eighty-seven. To be an example, uh, in uh, in its biggest year and this, this was the two thousand nine to ten year, they issued a hundred and seventy thou- eighty-seven thousand dollars in fines and the cost of the, what I think was twenty-nine thousand, that's the system all of it through, so they're big making money on that. And what I would like to see us do is actually do a, an investigation, a study into this, to see if we can do it here, what it can take. And to be uh, kind of uh, moderate about it and in that uh, maybe do it, uh, issue tickets via camera. This is being done also for the metro area, boy, I tell you, if you were going through Newburgh or Tigerd or Beaverton or any of these cities, obey the speed limits because they have cameras everywhere and that's how they're processing these a hundred and seventy, two hundred dollar speeding tickets. And it is a great way to raise revenue. Uh, and if we get our, I I think in the study, I would predict that if we run our course correctly with our own people and uh, uh, meld it into existing operations with our deputy, uh, that we could make uh, quite a bit of money for the course of the year. That's my prediction.
I would just caution and say that those are big cities you're talking about, they have their own police department, they have a municipal court, they have an extra staff that are, that can do this. They have a lot more people that go through, whereas if you talk to Wal- Walport, and I'm not saying I'm not gonna, you know, do the research, I'm just saying that Walport could tell you a very different story about whether or not they're making money on this. I think the sheriffs would tell you a very different story about whether or not they think the city depot bay have the municipal court is a good idea. And I know this because I've asked. But I'm happy to do the research if that's what council likes.
Seems like we still haven't gotten to our priority, right, because we we started and then there's other things that we wanted also to activate, right?
Oh, okay. Well, number one was the charter head tax, you know, when I said the food and beverage, and then I think we went to, oh, did we go, we have a three day.
Service. Generally everything's dynamic, like licensing.
Yeah.
But um.
Boy, you know, Mayor, I just think of these taxes that we are getting ready to levy on local businesses if we were to do this. Like a charter head tax, like a food and beverage tax. I don't, you know, in terms of the actual money that we receive, I, we haven't got any projections on that. If I think of the, of the immense amount of work that it imposes on the owners of businesses who are already besieged by taxes, I'll give you an example. We have a new corporate activity tax and under that, we have a lot of businesses in depot bay, not I, a lot, but we have several businesses in depot bay that are paying this. And everything they tell me is that when you add these taxes on, it comes out of the pockets of the employees of these businesses. Uh, hundreds of thousands of dollars right now is sucked out of depot bay, uh, the pockets of depot bay workers because of this. And this is just another pile on, as as I see it. I would rather that we tax ourselves, that we tax gas, that we do things that, and even gas tax, that just, you know, makes another bunch of paperwork for these people we know that support us, that I'm so grateful for, that they're in business, that we can actually even get gas along here.
But it was just a.
But I don't see that the, you know, and it would take time to set it up, I mean, it, you know, so you don't put it, you know, use if you pass a tax, you have to give a transition here because it's not gonna come out of those businesses. It's gonna be passed on to the charter vote people, you know, if they're paying thirty now, they're saying thirty. Enchar, anything he's talking about.
Oh, okay.
It's not, it's it's a very, very small percentage. And but it means that you have to, I don't know how you do it, you have to set it up, then you have to attach your credit card, just like you go to anywhere. You you go anywhere and there's different taxes that are added. So, I don't think it's gonna be a burden, it just has to take time for.
To increase.
It it would just take a time to adjust to it. And yes, the businesses know that it's coming, then they could also re- adjust their rates.
Could also leave a people bed.
We can take a break.
Fine, but um, I don't think that it's um, it it's current, it's a small amount and just would be added in almost in this to the um, chores that goes through taxes.
Yeah, so to, I I would have to agree somewhat with with Fran, you know, we, we pay quarterly transient lodging taxes. We have to pay them to two entities right now, we pay them to the state, so we have to do a filing with the state, it's all electronic now, you report to them what you did and and it's, it's an electronic filing, um, in this, in the, in the case of the city of depot bay, it's an annual piece of paper and and uh, we, we have to report revenues, we multiply by the multiplier is and uh, compare it to what we actually collected and and so, there is a, there is a burden, um, that it, that goes with it, but I think any, any tax, any kind of revenue stream that we're gonna look at, it's gonna have some level of burden to some value. And so, um, you know, that, that to me, I, it's certainly a consideration, but I I I would agree with Fran, I think it's, it's a minimal amount of of frustration, but it's, it's something that um, absolutely needs to be considered because if if all of a sudden we create this onerous process that people have to do, you know, corporate activity tax drives me absolutely insane because of all the rules that are around it and what can and can't be done and and when you have to notify them and all of that kind of stuff. I think there's nothing to say, we couldn't do a corporate activity type tax here in depot bay too, but it, it it just makes, it it's, it's just a, it's a poor implementation of an idea is what I believe. And I think that we, if we're careful, we can make it as nonverbalism as possible to the business people that are gonna have to potentially do it or the residents or whoever that may be. Um, it's, I mean, it it's just part of the the people we we live with as business people.
Okay, any other ideas on revenue resourcing? I did have, um, yesterday, um, I found out that the city of Toledo, not Toledo, yeah, Toledo, has a um, a tax, a utility fee that they put on for their streetlights. And they do um, eight dollars on their utility thing to pay for the electricity, um, and maintenance of their streetlights and it's just, you know, it's eighty, seventy-five a month for them, but it just might be something we could think of. To help pay for. I, the city of Toledo, they pay eight dollars and seventy-five.
The citizens, every, every citizen in every business.
Well, that'd be a lot.
Um, yeah. So that's, um, citizens, this was there. Everybody, everybody that uses a utility once a year, um, every, every utility year, so. That was just my idea to throw out is that might be a normal uh, revenue source, but it would be helpful to the city, um, to help maintain our street.
So that would be the utility service transportation.
Yes.
Yeah.
And of course, we'd have to pay so.
Yeah, no, it wouldn't have to be.
We need to figure out what that cost is and figure out how to.
Yeah. Exactly, we would have to, you know, do it nominally of three dollars because we bill every, every month, like monthly, so, um, you know. I I don't know, I don't even have a rate in mind, it was just a, throwing out a, um.
It would be interesting to call, see how it's working.
Yeah.
That's making a lot of complaints, you know.
Well, I went through public hearings and I was asked to hold it on and and implement it, so, I was just talking with this.
And just while I feel like that when it comes to that, you don't do any amendments, so.
You can't fix the line I have.
Maybe fault to you.
Essentially.
Essentially, and I'm sorry. Thank you. Right, we play, uh, we do definitely play electrical, but we don't pay. I'm sure there are maintenance in it or something.
Can I, can I just make a comment about the food and beverage?
Yes.
Uh, as a, as a transient lodging taxpayer, I feel extremely slighted that um, only heads and beds pay the tax. And so, um, I I would hesitate that we all of a sudden are now thinking about, let's, let's single out another business group in the city. I would think we, we need to, I think this needs to be a broader description and it needs to be a, a tourist tax as opposed to a food and beverage tax.
Right, right.
And then it would be a tax on on services and and products as opposed to just food and beverage.
So the transaction tax, more than the food and beverage, number five?
Well, if is that, if that's, if that's what a transaction tax is, then I think number three and number five should be combined together as a, as a, as a single discussion item. So that no one business is being singled out for a quote unquote sales tax. And you know, the, this user, this user fee on the charter, I think that, I think of that as different, it's, it's a, it's a fee, it's not a, well, these taxes, it's not a, it's one half a dozen, one of, six of one and half a dozen of another, it's, it's, but it, it's really more of a, a usage fee. We're charging them to use the docks that are out there, um, as opposed to taxing them a percentage of the bill that they have to pay for whatever they're, they're.
Yeah, the discussions, that a dollar per head.
Yeah.
Look, you see, you're.
It's like, it's like, I think the state doesn't, it's like you go into a park and you pay a day use fee, it would be kind of a similar thing to that with the, with the harbor docks.
But with the harbor docks, what would happen, or with the S, the head tax, that would go directly into the harbor.
Correct.
That money.
Probably. I would assume, you know.
So, I, I. So where would a restaurant and beverage tax go?
I have no idea, that's what we would have to research. You know, we're.
I'm sorry, did you give a question, what was the question?
Where would a restaurant and beverage tax go?
Where do you want it to put it?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it would be whatever the word is.
How about free drinks at races?
Are you meaning before we close?
We're on fifty people.
Very good.
Yeah, who's four?
I'm looking forward to the review of the short-term rental enforcement, I think there's a lot of um, revenue to and I know we bought the um, software, right, because what, a few years ago?
Right, yeah.
But we haven't had any updates recently.
Yeah.
But I am.
I'd be happy to provide enough data or enough data in the media or whatever you'd like.
So.
You're that kind of like, never be a.
So, can I just kind of weigh in on that? Um, Ken and I had a discussion when I first came on specifically about, um, there's a line item that's on our transient lodging taxes. It says, who are your, um, or how much money did you spend with Airbnb, VRVO, I don't know, there's a couple of, there's a couple of those line items. And um, in this, in the city of depot bay, we get absolutely zero money from Airbnb, Verbo, or whoever.
Oh, that's right.
There's, there's zero.
Right.
And so if any transient lodging tax person is claiming that there is a reduction in the amount of their taxable income by Airbnb or VRVO, they're incorrect and we should be auditing them because we're getting no money from those two entities. And so if they're claiming them, then we should be checking on that and figuring out why they believe that we should not be charging for it. Because that could represent a huge amount of revenue, you know, most, most, I I'll say probably fifty percent, at least in our case, fifty percent of our vacation rental revenue is through Airbnb. And if I were to fill out a form that says, you know what, I'm gonna reduce my taxable income to the city by fifty thousand dollars because yeah, I I paid Airbnb and we don't get that money from Airbnb, that's tax revenue that we should be getting at twelve percent. And so, uh, you know, I, Ken and I talked about it, she was gonna look at the forms and and try to figure out what was going on there and I think uh, our billing person, our our accounting person was, was going to check that as well. The other side of that equation is, um, back when we were doing financial advisory and we, and we brought Granikus on, um, there was, the state was just introducing their program to uh, do the transient lodging taxes. And I don't recall what the rates were or anything like that, but it seems, it seems to me that there might be some benefit for the city to consider
There you go.
in a cost reduction. So, you know, al- allowing our staff to use their time to do things like, uh, you know, uh, what's needed for the audits and and other accounting type functions, if we could take that particular task off of their desk
Right, yeah.
and let the state, who has Department of Revenue behind them and they have the Department of Justice behind them, to be able to do enforcement and um, review of all of this transient lodging stuff. And then we've got a single pay system, I get, I as a business person get to write one check. It goes to the state and the state ends up remitting to the city. At the time, we didn't do that because the state wasn't remitting money back to the city, that no longer exists, so I think it's worth investigating.
Oh, absolutely, it's coming before, yeah, I have the IJ, I've already reached out to them. It's a really good thing because one of the most challenges we have is the enforcement. We don't have anybody to go out to verify whether or not somebody is a transient, we don't have anybody to do the audits to verify whether they're paying enough. Um, it's a lot of work just to make sure they are paying and billed every, you know, top of business license. Not complaining on this thing, the reality is, you know, we just don't have, it's got to do it. And so I am bringing the IJ to you guys, cause I would like to add our Department of Revenue yet.
Yeah, but we should in the meantime remove those two line items.
No, no, I don't please.
We should remove those two line items or whatever they were on our, on our form. Because they're, they're just very misleading and I think that people, I don't, I don't think it's. So I'm not on the side that says people are deliberately marking them down and saying, you know, we're gonna reduce our taxable income because I I truly believe that because it's on the form, people are saying, oh, the city wants to know how much money I'm paying Airbnb and our form says, take the total number, subtract the Airbnb and this becomes your new taxable number, multiply it by this. And so I, I just think they need to take the lines off and if somebody truly believes that they should be getting reduction, then they can come to the city and say, here's why I think I need a reduction, I've already paid those taxes to Airbnb and you should collect them.
Is that something we could look into?
Um, I, I think the answer to that question is, is if we have, or Department of Revenue, do it, go use their own forms.
Correct.
So, um, we're not at the point of adding a bill yet and we might actually have the, or Department of Revenue before we need to bill. So, let me have Diana look at, cause I'm looking at a form right now and I'm, maybe I'm not seeing it, but I don't see anything about reducing anything for.
Isn't it, it's on the line items, it says something about um, transient intermediaries?
It does, from, uh, red from transient lodging intermediaries.
Yep, so that would be Airbnb, the transient lodging intermediaries are Airbnb, Verbo, booking.com, all of those.
So. Right, right. But I also think we're getting money from them, so I will verify that.
Definitely, cause that would be great, cause I think there's a huge potential there for increased revenue.
Hundreds of thousands.
Same, same with the uh, with the audit, you know, finding every, Franekas was supposed to help us identify where those people are and I think the problem we had was the GIS. And we were trying to overlay what is a commercial zone in the city because we only allow vacation rentals are a commercial zone. So if there is a vacation rental in residential zoning in the city of depot bay, it's illegal. And we need to collect, we need, they need to pay us for the back taxes that they've collected. And we need to figure out what we want to do with them. And so, that's what the, the whole Granikas process when, that we started was, was for, was to help identify those so that we could optimize that revenue. That, that was it, it was optimization of revenue.
It's a lot.
It's a lot. And so our priorities, so we've, we've, we've kind of labeled them down now as, as the, the charters and then we got the tourists, or I mean, the the food and beverage and transactional, was it, were they the second one?
Yes. Or the uh, food and beverage was the second?
Well, now the, the dollars, now like, I do.
Okay, I thought transactional, so it's more.
Okay, okay, that sounds good. Okay. Um, well, fuel tax would be like number four?
Um, what's number three?
No, utilities.
Utility, things for politicians are.
Um, I just wanna make sure that she's getting this right, first one is charter head tax, second is the, the beverage transactional tax, third one is utility, what's her name?
Or.
Mm-hmm. Fuel.
And then, and then looking at licenses and, is that, does that get added or were there those things that people brought up?
We're gonna have to put this all together and just go on from there.
Okay.
We really need to review all of our fees, but I think, but I take time.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Mayor, I think one thing about this meeting, and I really appreciate this because I feel like this is one of the old financial advisory committee meetings I used to attend and really make progress and, you know, forced to think about your revenues. But I think that unless we get our revenue situations where the way, we make sure that we have all of our fees up to snuff and that we're collecting all of our uh, food taxes, uh, that our audits are in run and our own finances are, you know, perfect. I think it's gonna be difficult to sell new taxes to anybody, especially these, you know, sector taxes. I mean, not especially opposed to a utility tax, I think it's way too far away down the list because that's the tax that gets everybody's skin in the game that uh that that we need to look at, thank you.
Kim, do you kind of wanna bring us up to snuff on the on the implement?
Well, if I just put as an agenda, I would, it's in my stack before I do it, plus I gave you the guide. So I think that if you look at, for example, the grants past presentation when they went through this progress, they tell you right there whether or not something must go to a voted people, you just will do it, but whether or not something has to. Um, and then if you're going to implement a new tax and go to the voted the people, it will lead beyond a ballot, which will be not to place that. Well, we would have to have that in March, everything done about that, so.
And I think the League of Cities, um League of Urban Cities is also combining compiled guidelines of how to implement. So.
They already have this one in here, so you might just be finding, but I've already provided all that because it was asked of me how to do it and. Did you just touch on it?
So Madam Mayor, did you go to the meeting yesterday at Lincoln City?
Mm-hmm.
And did they kind of talk about how to implement taxes?
Not really, no, that's that's where they came up with it, they they're gonna have by the end of the year guideline, I have to.
No.
Um, it was, you know, it was good information on what other cities are doing and um Hermiston had a two million dollar deficit and they put in a uh voted in a public safety fee that was well received because um they were forced to reduce their fire and um and um police.
Sure.
And so they they were able to pass a measure.
Yeah.
I have a question, how long do we think we need to research these items before we come back and have a big discussion with the community members and public comment?
Right. We need to call our administration.
I don't have any questions for you.
How do we can do one at a time?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
One, one on that. I would do the best to meet a timeline that we wish.
Well, let's just start with one, see how it goes.
Okay.
So if the first one was the charter tax, can we?
I'm already almost through that.
So has the harbor commission?
Well, that's what I'm saying, they already kind of reviewed the data, that a meeting, true, yeah, I can't. Next one's next.
So I would think that would be a good start.
I think if you did, if you do one of them, that'd be too much.
Yeah, yeah. I was gonna say, I, there's an awful lot going on, an awful lot going on.
Would be, would you set your schedule? Um, so what I'd like to see is how, and we, and we've been talking about this, how much does the harbor cost? Because, I mean, that's, because that if we are gonna put on a um user fee, a day used fee at every hour, it'd be nice and I'll need to, if it goes to a voter, even if it doesn't, justify how much, you know, is being spent by the city just to keep the harbor up, so we can't use that revenue elsewhere.
I think that would be part of the public um.
Yeah, but that's something we have to get all in and all that stuff, we get our figures together.
Right. Right.
It'll really give everybody, I think, a sense of how much we're sort of needing for the harbor.
So are we gonna incorporate these ideas into regular city council meetings and take public comment then? Is that how it's gonna work or is it gonna be a separate meeting?
That will be up to the local council.
It'll be an agenda item, as to whether we want, when we get the research done, whether we wanna pursue it and then we wait to set a public hearing.
Mayor, I, you know, one thing I can sort of about heard a little bit about this is uh, and we've seen it in in the reports in the council packet, it appears that our staff is really overwhelmed right now. I saw it in the reference to the audits that were behind on that and the crushing demands of the lawsuit. And uh, I I wonder, I like your approach of doing it one one at a time, but it's still. And I remember, Kim, one time you talked about implementing a tax, you preferred not to do, I my impression was that you would prefer not to implement a tax because it takes so much time to do that.
Well, anything you would do would take time, so I'm here to serve the council, we're here to serve the city. Um, everything would take time and something that has to be backed in, just like House of Works at the beginning of the meeting. There are like the other things that take a backseat to depending on what you want to do. It's all about what you wanna do and how we implement it, because something's gonna be easier to implement. I would say the utility is easy to implement.
Well, I joined the council, Mayor, if I can say, to see if I could help with the audits, I mean, I mean, if I had one thing, you know, that motivated motivated me to do that because I felt they were so important to our ability to borrow money and to do other things. And I read in this uh packet that we've come to ground to a halt on that. Uh, and we just still yet to produce a completed audit in my term. So that worries me as we go forward on.
That's gotta work, honestly, the audit is not even available until.
It's December, I think.
They won't be now because it's the middle of the season, so they're doing it in the states.
Right.
After December, I'll be able to get back on.
And I think that that's where we, if we could optimize staff, if we could offload some stuff from the staff. Like Diane, if we could offload activities, that would free up staff time to be able to do the research and stuff here, that that could help. But it's, if everybody's working to their max, adding another thing to the plate becomes a challenge. And so we are, we as a as a council have to decide what's more important, our taxes and revenue streams is more important than an audit or whatever other things are on everyone's plate. And I don't, I don't know the processes to help define that, I I mean, I think that the administrator would need to tell us where we have room, where we don't have room. And we just need to decide what we wanna prioritize.
Removing the the short-term rental, that would be a big, a thing that it does that would free up, it takes a lot of time. Takes you guys a lot of time to fill them out, it takes us a lot of time to process. And then if you wanted to add that compliance piece, you know, our new city chairman could help with that, but he's gonna be so busy doing all the lame news things that are coming up. So, um, but it's, you know, it's possible, so, but that would be, that would be developed to free room.
And when is he starting again?
January five, January.
Um, I'm I'm surprised at the number of taxes when I read through the packet that were not required of the of the of the citizens. You know, I I don't know what the appetite of the council is, but I would think that a lot of citizen input would be important. And you know, like uh in Newport, they chose to send it to the voters as opposed to just implementing it. And I think we need to have that discussion as well to.
Absolutely.
To decide whether it's something that we can just implement or want to just implement, or whether the voters should be allowed to vote on it.
And that's the process still is that once we have all the details in place, um, and an analysis from the administrator, then we can take it to an agenda item to discuss how we want to preserve it. So. It just keeps going though, that if you decide to put it on a ballot, once we create and the staff help you create the uh the territorial rights text, once it gets placed, it is out of staff's hands, it's all in a council to candidate for it. It would be someone, right, votes, so once we do paperwork, if you will, then it is out of hand, so it would require council prime member. Why not?
Or citizen, I mean, if there, I mean, if we if we have a a business group that would be behind the tax or if we had a set of residents or whoever were behind it, we can certainly call on them to help promote.
Absolutely.
We can also do a valid initiative as a citizen.
Hmm. Maybe we have our. Oh, okay, did Council Solven have anything else you wanted to say? No. She's shaking her head. That's a no, okay, got it. Okay, oh, we've got a lot of information here and we want to pursue. And we'll come back, Kim will come back with maybe a timeline of what's due. Okay. Okay, so do we end the meeting before Council speak more comments or?
No, we can take longer.
Okay, we'll take ten minutes of comments. Yes.
Up to the tip, I didn't uh.
Pre- sheet. Well, we're not pre- sheet, we're not. Yeah.
They have to sign in.
Yeah, we're.
They need to sign in.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, they have to sign in if they want to speak.
Otherwise, we won't get in the minutes.
I'm sorry.
We'll monitor the minutes.
We'll do it this way, oh, Brady has a bad, I'm looking for. So when you come up, please put your name and you don't need to put your street, we're not gonna anymore, just put this, your name in the city. And I've got three minutes. And why do you sign in for people online if you wish to comment? Please, uh, there's a feature that you can raise your hand, um, if you look at the bottom of your screen, it usually has some kind of a um, reaction, you can raise your hand, so just take a look at that, um, and when I speak, I will watch for that and I will call you up.
And one thing, a lot of people.
What was your name?
I'm Frank Schubert with RC one on one.
Yes.
And one thing a lot of people don't understand about businesses like ours, my prices that I charge are kind of designated by what's online pricing, and I can't go over that. So if there's an additional tax imposed on me, I'm overpricing my customers and I'm gonna lose a lot of my sales because of that.
Okay.
That's what I'm gonna go on.
Oh, thank you, thank you for quite a words, actually, with this, sorry.
Yes, but RC, RC one on one, yeah.
RC one on one.
Yeah.
Nice, nice. We'll start at all of them.
So if if uh I I think it should should go reminded that this nation is founded on tax reform, okay? And so um, people tend to be relatively sensitive about it, especially if they're, uh, in this case, their business is targeted. And uh, um, so in in the food and beverage tax, which is only implemented, I think, in maybe three communities in Oregon, and it's it's it may or may not be on the ballot and can't pass. People that come to the cities, municipalities, where it is in place, they complain about it, they say, what's this? Okay? And I, and it's been brought up that we pay, have no tax base, but uh, Mayor, I've got a, when I get my tax statement, I'm sorry, I've got local um uh uh charges based upon um levies that have been done through, you know, it's been through the fire department, that include uh school, all these things that we might pay local taxes on that are associated with living in Dico Bay.
Perfect, because you pay zero of your property.
And.
Please stop saying that.
That's you, okay.
Okay.
But but I'm I'm saying I do pay taxes, you know, there's other industries that don't, but uh I do.
Okay.
And so what happens, so uh if if a a sales tax is implemented on food and beverage, which which unfairly targets one industry in the in the city. And saves five percent, what happens if the state decides to impose a sales tax? Then we have a five percent tax legacy for the city, they've they've become, they've come to depend upon. And with a five five to eight percent, maybe in some cases ten percent statewide tax, that's fifteen percent. At what point do the consumers, we're worried about people not going out now, what happens when people stop coming to the coast? Okay, because thi- this is not, this is not a a unrealistic scenario. Casa Mosella mentioned uh that there's been a ten percent fall in revenues, I don't know if that's statewide or just in his industry. But um, I think that the um lodging tax actually unfairly targets um hotels and the and the innkeepers, okay? And it's grown so high that people are going home, if you're, and most of my business is not from out of state. It's from in-state, people that know that there's not a sales tax when they go out to eat because they're Oregonians, there's nowhere else they pay it, and in 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 most cases, nowhere else except maybe your hots. Maybe if they go down to, or I don't know, Ashland, okay?
You have three minutes, so.
Okay, all right, so yeah, I would leave you, thank you.
So.
So really great discussion hearing all these ideas today, I just would like to remind the council that it is unrealistic to impose a tax specifically on tourists and say that that's not gonna impact locals, whether we like it or not, and a lot of times we don't, we are symbiotic with our local, with the tourists. So all of the things that are gonna impact the tourists are gonna impact us as people who work in this city, as people who are business owners. And I think a lot of the public outrage and the public concern comes from not knowing what this money is gonna be spent on. It feels like we're doing a lot of discussion about what to tax, but not a lot about what those tax dollars would actually be going towards. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. You want to choose any of them?
Zoe.
She's on. Parts, yeah. We have time for one more comment?
Hello, uh, my name is Joseph Dragon, I own the little wine shop um called Crush and Crafted. Uh, I just have a little small comment, I uh personally, I think that instead of imposing more taxes on the citizens and possibly also the tourists, uh, the city government needs to work on efficiency um and how they spend their money and kind of bringing together um basically what's going on in the city, local city government. And then the second thing would be um the parking lots, the parking areas, not necessarily the um the on the main street right here, but you know, I'm from New Orleans originally and every place in New Orleans that has a parking lot is a charged, some sort of charged service for parking there. So I think the city needs to reevaluate, at least in the parking areas that they own, possibly, you know, uh, they they use tax or, you know, five bucks or however, for however many hours, you know, that's all. And uh, that's basically all I have to say.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Mayor, you said that when we first opened the meeting, that everything was in order, your bank account, you have money in the bank, et cetera. What is the city doing for your part to help balance this budget to get more money? Are you making cuts? Are you thinking of no raises for the employees?
Our budget is balanced right now and we're following this to the letter. We absolutely do not do any extra spending unless it's endless budget, so that is what we do right now is.
And that's what, yeah, that's what I was wondering, what are you doing to help as a as a city to make sure that the city is taking care of?
We follow our budget.
Okay. That was it.
Oh, thank you.
Sign in to this.
Okay, we are adjourned. Okay, we are adjourned.